Hello, welcome. I call this May 24th, 2022, meeting of the Board of Finance to order. We, I approve, I move to approve the February 22nd, 2022 Board of Finance Meeting Minutes. Can I please have a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Thank you. And we're excited to have presentation by our County Treasurer, Bierce and her team, Board of Finance, report, Madam Treasurer to present.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Finance. I am Nancy Bierce, your Burnley County Treasurer. This is the quarterly report for January 1st through March 31st of 2022. In your packet is the report that we'll just run through. First is the agenda and what's on all the pages. Very standard report. The first slide is the property tax collections. And again, remember, this is as of March 31st. And you have your three years there, 19, 20, and 21. And you'll see that we collected $471 million as of March 31st. Also remember that the tax roll is 10 years. And delinquent taxes after 10 years are presumed paid and falls off. And our next slide, let you know how we did on a percentage basis for collections. And again, because it is March, and second half of property taxes aren't due until May 10th, we only collected almost 61%. That is pretty traditional for March. So year over year, that's about the same average rerun. Delinquent tax collections will start in June. And also, just to bring you up to date, as of April 30th, we were up to 69%. We had collected 536 million. So, we're getting there. We still haven't collected all of May yet. So we'll be reporting that out to you in August. Next slide just talks about the operations. And again, through March 31st, there's some very significant things that happened in that quarter that I'll remind you of. First off is, we did start Ring Central's Call Center Module. And that module is where more than, you know, three or four people can be on the line answering phone calls and that kind of thing. So it's a true call center telephone setup. So you'll see that call volume on the top left kind of different. But first is January. And you'll see January really spiked in orange for 2022. And you'll remember, something happened in January for us that was pretty detrimental. And that was the cyber attack that we had. So you'll see, that one just really bumped us up. February kind of settled back down. March, we were still kind of at our usual amount of 4,000 to 5,000. Because again, that cyber attack had us closed for several weeks. We couldn't post anything, any payments that we had received. They were just sitting safely in the vault. But we couldn't get them posted on the system. So people were calling, do I need to pay again? Why isn't it showing up? So we still had a lot of calls and emails about that. Right below that is our annual statement. It's an annual turnover to the state for if you're three years or more delinquent. So that hasn't changed. Still 642 for 2021. The big graph just talks about delinquent collections. As you know, I have a great staff that collects all year long on delinquent collections. We kind of backed off after that cyber attack. Didn't make sense to start collecting when we knew we couldn't. We could make calls, but we couldn't do anything with the money we were getting. So you'll see some, some changes in there. You'll definitely see that January 2022, which is that second set of four columns way down. Again, that was the cyber attack that we had. So we didn't collect much money then. But everything kind of tries, starts to trend back up in February and March. Also remember, we have the delayed tax bill. So it didn't come out till December 10th. Taxes weren't due till January 10th. However, the cyber attack happened before January 10th. So people were scrambling about that. The next slide is your pie distribution. Yes, ma'am.
On the last slide, can you review the difference between MH, PP, and RP?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. I'm very sorry for that, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. MH is manufactured homes or mobile homes. PP is personal property. So usually, that's business equipment that you think of. And then RP is real property. So that's land and anything that's built on the land.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question.
I have another question on this thing section.
Absolutely.
Just so, before we move. You said that, you, just maybe to repeat what you said. You said that in Jan, we had gotten the Ring Central previous to January, and then January is when we hit, yeah. And when the cyber attack hits. Okay, I just want to make sure I was clear.
Yes, thank you. And it was nice, we did have it in before the cyber. Well, thank IT for that. Let's see. Or production, what are we calling it? I don't know. Okay, that's IT. The next slide is your property tax distribution. Because of course, not only do I collect just for the county, but I collect on behalf of all the taxing entities in Burnley County. And here again, I'm using the categories of the entities. So you see the education, the county, the city villages, health, environment, and the state. And of course, you see the education as being the ones that received the most amount of tax money. And that's, that's a wonderful thing. I think we can all agree that education is highly ranked in our community. And then second and third is the county, and then cities and villages. And then we go to health, which is our UNM Hospital. And then our other two, state and environment. Okay, wonderful. This is where I jump off. And my deputy, Ryan Travelstead, takes over. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Madam Chair, my name is Ryan Travelstead, for the record. And I'll go through the next couple of slides here with the, the board. This first slide here that I'll go over is the bank balance. It details, our bank balances and collateral. This details the balances of each of the county's bank accounts and the associated FDIC coverage and collateral for those accounts. Two things that I will note, the Wells Fargo account here, the $5.5 million of exposure. So essentially, I guess, let me take a step back and kind of talk through collateral at a high level. So essentially collateral is in place so that in the worst, the worst case that the bank fails, the county can recoup the collateral that they have pledged so that we don't lose, you know, 100% of the, the money that we have at that account. So, in that account. So I'll go through this Wells Fargo, this top section here. So essentially, we have $31 million in the account. You have $750,000 of FDIC coverage, which leaves an uninsured balance of $31 million. So Wells Fargo has $25.4 million pledged in collateral. So in the event, Wells Fargo, which is a really big bank that we deem pretty safe, that they fail, we would then in turn get those securities that they have pledged. So what that means is that we have an exposure of, if the worst case happens, they do fail, the $5.5 million would be money that we would essentially lose. But then it would go through some other avenues to recoup funds. Kind of goes through legal processes and things like that. So kind of high level talking through that. The next one down, the Burnley County Housing Nonprofit. They have their own separate bank account. That one's due to HUD regulations, is required to be collateralized at 100%. That one's met that, that goal. We also have an account with, for San Miguel County through the Burnley County Housing Department. We administer some of their housing programs for them. Then we move up to the Bank of the West accounts. So this is a fully FDIC covered in count, covered in account. So essentially, what that balance represents is it's split out into $250,000 pieces to banks all across the country. And so that's why, how it maintains that FDIC coverage. That's the same account type there for the next section down, which is Main Bank. And then here at Bank of America, these are two really old repurchase agreements that were entered into in, I believe, the late 90s. And so they've, we've retained those because they have a pretty attractive yield. They mature in 2027, if I believe. So this account here had an exposure of $23,000, again, as of March 31st. But that has been, since been corrected and is trending above the 100% collateral required for that account. The next slide, we'll go through some high level economic update information. Yes, a lot of things happening out there. Essentially, the GDP contracted by 1.4% kind of looking back through the first quarter of 2022. Not a good thing. There's kind of mixed signals. Jobs are steadily increasing. We're kind of almost back to, on a national level, we're almost back to the number of jobs before the pandemic started. Some things that are on the radar, inflation is definitely a, a big one. Still continued supply chain disruptions that could impact the GDP growth. And then also, the Federal Reserve is beginning to raise interest rates. And so there's some concern that, hey, maybe they might raise rates too aggressively and, in the, which might result in the economy going into a recession. So yeah, a lot of watch points. We do have a, a really good partner in Government Portfolio Advisors who here to speak to, to a little bit later on in the presentation. Have a really good watch on all of those things. Here locally, unemployment essentially recovered from what the UNM Beaver has said. It's about 98% of the jobs that have, that were lost during the pandemic have been recovered. And then same with housing and, and oil production. They're, they're showing positive signs. The next slide, we'll go through the investment strategy. Still working with the three bucket strategy. So again, we have a highly liquid bucket, which is 15% of our annual budget that we keep, that will mature in 30 days or less. So we can turn that over, pay counties the bills very quickly. We also have a liquid portfolio that we invest out into the, around one year. It's kind of morphed into a one to two year. We'll talk and, talk about that in a little bit more detail a little later. And then we also have the core portfolio, which is essentially funds that aren't anticipated to be needed to fund bills. And so we can kind of push those out a little bit farther to earn a little bit more yield. So this slide here details the holdings of the highly liquid portfolio. Essentially, it's, yeah, $287 million. If you have any questions, feel free, you can interrupt. And so this is the account where we have to, the, the bucket where we have to meet the 15% of the annual operating budget. That 15% number is 82.7 million. We have 287 million, so we're way, well above that target. Move to the next slide. This details again, kind of some of the benchmarking of that portfolio and the book yield of that portfolio. And essentially, the market value, since these are in highly liquid accounts, the market value is essentially the, the par value as well. And then the next slide, we'll go into our liquid, liquid bucket. And so here, you can see that we have, the market value is 135 million as of March 31st. Our policy requires that 60 million of this bucket mature within 12 months. That has been met. And, yeah. Move to the next slide, this bucket here. Again, so the market value. Sorry, this is the market yield of 1.6, is that 1.6%? So not highly, not super attractive, but for, given the market conditions, it's not a bad rate. But yeah, more, I guess, as the Federal Reserve begins to raise rates, that, you'll start to see those yields start to, to tick up. And then here, we go into our core portfolio. Again, here, we have $137 million. This one is, is actively managed by our investment advisor, Government Portfolio Advisors. And again, here, we can see the benchmarking information and yields. And here's a summary of the three buckets. The grand total of market value of $570 million. And this does include the $10 million of the, those standalone repurchase agreements that I mentioned that were into, entered into back in the late 90s that we've held on to. They mature in 2027. But I think they're, they're yielding around 6%. So there's not really a good reason to get out of those contracts, especially we're assessing those and they are safe. And kind of regularly monitoring those. But yeah, no real good reason to, to exit those contracts until they mature. And this graph here is something to, to show that, you know, although we have the, the core portfolio and the highly liquid, or the liquid portfolio, they're invested into essentially treasury and agency securities. The benchmark goes out to five years on the core portfolio. This slide here demonstrates that we don't have 100% of that balance invested out five years. There's a nice still spread in there, so we have some even maturities. So in the worst event, worst case event, that if we need to access liquidity, we have access to that in a very short timeframe. Next slide, we'll go through our bond proceeds portfolio. And this portfolio, it's invested in a manner to meet anticipated project draw schedules. And so our, we work very closely with the, the Finance Division on this and all portfolios in our monthly working group meetings. This portfolio, as of March 31st, had $38.2 million of market value. This is the same slide that shows the yield comparison and the duration to the benchmark. And this slide here will show our investment income by quarter. So for the third quarter, $663,000. And that is a sign, if you look to the, compared to the same quarter of the previous year and then the previous, preceding quarters, it's quite a bit lower. But again, that's just kind of takes time for those, as interest rates decrease, that we, there's a lag when, when we start to see that result in the reduction in earnings. And one thing I will point out, I made a mistake on this report. And this foot, this grand total does not include the $663,000 from the third quarter. So my very, very good, big apologies, the grand total should be $2.6 million for that footing there.
Excuse me real quick.
Yes, sir.
Can you review why the revenue has gone down with rates going up?
That's an excellent question, Mr. Vice Chair. So essentially, the, the revenue is, is a function of investment contracts that have been entered into over the preceding two or three years. And so as rates went down, you know, we're always regularly buying investments. And so rates just started to kick up now. So that what we're, the revenue that we're seeing at the, currently is a function of the investment contracts that we've entered into over the, the past two to three years.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if I might add, the, if we look back in this slide here, so this, this highly liquid bucket, it's going to be most sensitive. We'll see interest rate changes very quickly in this bucket. And then a little bit, there'll be a little bit of lag when we see, changes in earnings on the liquid bucket. And then it'll be even longer lag on the core bucket as interest rates move.
Good, thank you.
Excellent question. Thank you for that. We'll catch back up. And now I will turn it back over to Madam Treasurer to discuss some other office news. And then she will in turn, turn it over to Deanne with Government Portfolio Advisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. See, I lost my place. I better catch up here. But I'll just read from the, from the slides, just to kind of catch you up on some office news that's going on that we're taking action on. One is what's called Public Access Module. And that's a module that's from our vendor for our property tax system that is shared with the assessor. And they, the assessor already has this in their, in their website, basically. And we're purchasing it for some other reasons. And it gets us better, I don't know what you want to call it, better working stability of the system to use it instead of having a customized search function for property taxes. We know that when we first went to this product, there wasn't a search function. And we did have to create one from scratch for the Treasurer's Office. But now that there is one, it makes more sense for us to go ahead and be uniform, use the best practice for the software and have this property search module for also the Treasurer's Office. It also gets us a little bit of relief on the IT side. So we don't have staff resources always looking at that if, if something happens with our search. And certainly during our cyber attack, we saw that. I can't get in. Can you have somebody fix your search site? No, it wasn't the search site, as we know. But that was another point that we had to check before we brought things up. So it's going to match, it's going to provide that consistency and reduce that unique maintenance that we have going on. People are already used to it, especially realtors of using the assessor's search. So we don't anticipate it to be problematic for the public. But still, it will be something new. That'll probably go into the fall, we believe. Also, as I've mentioned before, we're going into the summer, well, early summer. Delinquent collections. We're looking at already getting out probably late this week or next week our 2022 Monthly Payment Plan, which we call the 10-Month Plan, where people can spread their tax year just over those 10 months and break it up. It works very well for fixed income folks as well as seniors. And then also, we're starting the Investment Policy Review with our new Investment Advisors GPA. Also, we've completed the Investment Procedures Update. So that's completed. And then we've already started on outreach, like this in a live situation. We're now going out to community centers. I think we're going to be out with you, Commissioner Benson, with, with some new and exciting things. There's, there's the veterans' functions that we've been attending. You know, we went with Commissioner Pescotti's area as well. So we're getting out there doing our outreach events. So looking forward to those summer movies. And now we're going to get into the guts of this investment stuff. So I'm going to turn it over to our GPA Senior Advisor, Deanne Woodring.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. It's a privilege to be in front of you personally today. I know that you are just getting back in the room, and it's so nice to see everybody. I'm Deanne Woodring, President of Government Portfolio Advisors. I represent our team of Investment Advisors. We have five senior advisors that are always available to the county at any time with a great depth. So you'll see me sometimes, you'll see my partners come in. But we really are looking forward to the partnership with the county. In our last meeting, and I was on there on Feb. 24th, we just started with you on February 6th. And we are in the process of a transition of moving the portfolio structure over under GPA. That transition went seamlessly. We worked in partnership with PTA to transfer the assets and get them under our portfolio strategy. And they provided historical data to us. So we were able to make it seamless and maintain the integrity of everything that was in the county's portfolio. So we were pleased with that. I wanted to step back. As the Treasurer mentioned, there's been quite a interest rate change. And what's really great about the time we're entering is the benefits for the county on an interest earnings basis is going to be substantial. Interest rates went in December 31, in the two-year note, which is the area that we invest, from a 0.75% to 2.75%. We have not seen that increase in recent history in interest rates. And they had stayed for a very long time, very low, below 0.5 or 0.2. And that's what Ryan was referring to when you talked about those, that interest rate cycle. So also, in that immediate observation that I had when we started working with the county, is I noticed the high balances of liquidity, which provides for an opportunity for the portfolio to be structured in a way that works a little more holistically. So I wanted to touch down on what we talked about at the Finance Committee meeting in the approach that GPA is introducing to the county and what the main components that we're looking at. So all of our portfolio construct is based on your investment polyobject, policy objectives, which are safety, liquidity, yield. And then we always add the risk factor in there. So the way we address safety is looking at the, number one, making sure you always have liquidity provided for. The county has a great track record on looking at cash flows, understanding what's happening internally here. So we take the cash flows, hedge those a little bit more for liquidity, and get a very clear understanding of what's happening across all your funds. We also address safety by looking at maturity structure and diversification secure, structure, which is based on your investment policy, which we'll be reviewing and coming back to you on. We look at your asset class diversification, which are highly weighted in US Treasury Securities right now, which is a value asset class. There's not a lot of alternatives, given the, the situation in the market. And then we look at credit analysis, which yours is pretty minimal. When we look at liquidity, it's making sure and really understanding those flows. As a county, you have that large tax roll that hits you every November and in May. And so we incorporate that cash flow and understand what needs to stay liquid and what can be redeployed in as actually county money. So we're very focused that the buckets that you're working in are perfect. They're exactly how GPA approaches it, looking at a liquid, highly liquid, cash equivalent portfolio, looking at a, we call a cash match liquidity ladder that meets ongoing expectations in kind of a second tier of liquidity, and then the core investments. And then core investment portfolio is the one that really is a balancer to the portfolio. Because we can look at that and capture higher interest rate earnings because that's money that is really targeted for the future. So we've done a lot of work over the last couple of months in identifying the purpose of the funds, tying the purpose of the funds to the portfolio. And our recommendation at the end today is going to be increase that core fund portfolio and let that work in tandem with your other portfolios. And then the third area, our fourth area we're looking at is, so, so with yield or return, it's mainly about your average maturity and understanding the overall average maturity of the portfolio and making sure that that's consistent with your cash flows. So that's what we've done in looking at the recommendations. When we look at risk, the main risk that the county is exposed to is interest rate risk. When interest rates go up, the value of the portfolio declines. As I mentioned at the opening, we've just entered the highest, quickest rating. As I mentioned at the opening, we've just entered the highest, quickest rate uptick that we've ever seen in a long time. So the value of the portfolio has declined and then as interest rates rose. It's not a they're unrealized changes in the portfolio. You will capture and get back everything at par, but it's just an unrealized documentation that we need to be accountable for. And it's very important that we're accountable to that. And so what we do is we track that portfolio and that market change, make sure it's consistent with the risk profile that your portfolio is established. And that makes your check is doing what it should be doing. So that's the main risk area and we did focus that on that. So we gathered your data going back to 2018. This is a kind of a loud graph. But I the thing that jumped out when we looked at it was the size, that blue line is the size of your liquidity ladder portfolio, very stable. Those jumps are when tax receipts come in and you use that portfolio. The green section is your core investment portfolio. And the yellow is your highly liquid. And the first thing that we saw out of that is there's a lot of highly liquid assets in there. And that's because you, like everybody in the nation, have received a lot of additional cash flow coming in between the federal grants, between ARPA money. There's just a lot of changes going on in growth. And so this is really a consistent pattern that we're seeing. So the immediate question was, does this money need to stay in cash? Or are there opportunities within the other two portfolios that will provide a more stable, balanced portfolio for the county? So the next step was, and this is all our background, kind of our first step is to really understand what's happening here. The more we understand, the more confident we are in the decisions and the recommendations. So this next page was really looking at those monthly variances over the last four years, and they're very consistent. So we can track that. We know what's going to happen and we can make sure that we can build some targets around that to ensure that all our eyes are on all points that you need. So the approach that GPA is looking at is to create ranges for your dedicated buckets. So the highly liquid is currently at 287 million as of March 31. And we're recommending to bring that balance down because you don't need all that money sitting in the bank. Create minimums and maximums because of that variance that we see that happens during your tax rule of the minimum of 100 million and the maximum of 300 million. And so that we all of our eyes are on that throughout the whole division on the finance side on looking at where that range is. By bringing that liquidity down, it ensures that you always have cash available. But we're managing that with the other portfolios. The liquidity ladder, we're still under some observation of the liquidity ladder. By your current policy, you're required to have 60 million under one year, and that works beautifully. But we also think there might be some opportunities to do more cash, what I call cash matching, where we're looking at your payroll. We're looking at your debt service and build that portfolio to support your known cash needs. And then that leaves the core longer portfolio, which is currently managed to a two-year average maturity. It has investments between zero and five years. There's about 22% of that portfolio that's under one year, that's maturing all the time, that can get pulled back. So our recommendation was to look at increasing that core because of the rise in interest rates today. We'll be able to invest at around a 2.5%. And then also have a minimum, a maximum limit on that where we would not exceed 300 million on that portfolio. And when we're looking at public funds, we're always balancing those two. So that's still keeping you at about a 50-50 split between liquidity and core, which is still relatively conservative. We want to be conservative for the county. We want to approach this with diligent and work into it slowly. But that's where that recommendation is going to come from. So in the bond proceeds portfolio, very impressed with the ongoing tracking of that of how that's working. So we receive from the finance division, when a bond matures, the dates that need to go and that you need, you know, know you need to fill. And then we provide a investment recommendation, gets approved, and we match the dates that you need. And that's been very tight. So we're maintaining that in the manner that it's being managed. So with that, my next step is to go to the advice and consent agenda. Are there any questions?
Yes, ma'am. We had spoken about it at our last meeting, but what's the position on percentage ranges versus dollar amount ranges?
You know, I like the idea of bringing in the percentage ranges and we talked about that. And I, the reason that the percentage regions help is when your asset, your assets change, when you go lower or higher, we're able to be consistent with that. So I will bring that into that guideline because I think that will help in the communication, whether we're at 50-50 or 30-70. And then when your overall assets are shifting, we're able to be consistent to that.
Thank you.
And and I'll just pipe in is that's something we've penciled in to look at our investment policy. Because right now it's in dollars. It's not in percentages. So we're going to have that conversation as well.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Okay, with no other questions? Okay, so they, I called it action for consent, but advice and consent, correct? So we're recommending for the highly liquid to reduce liquidity balance by approximately 35 million and move that excess to the operating core fund. For the liquidity ladder, we're recommending the same to reduce the liquidity balances that are excess of what is needed and used as the maturities come due to pull those either back to liquidity or into the core account. And for the core account to increase up to 135 million. We will be timing that as best we can. We are not predictors of the market. Our plan is to step into the portfolio, not go buy all 135 million tomorrow. The markets are really volatile right now. I think talk a lot about the changes that are happening. I don't know if you saw the home sales this morning, that new home sales were down 17%, which was a big number. So we like the market where it is. We like adding in here at 2.5%. It might go up to 3%, but you have we have plenty of liquidity and plenty of really good balance in the portfolio to achieve that. So our recommendation is to shift up to 135 million to the core.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion, comments?
I think it's a good opportunity to increase revenue. I think it's a good idea.
And do we vote on this? Okay, so I move to accept the advice and consent. Can I?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. You have passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer, Deputy, and thank you so much.
And it it takes us just back to the last slide about questions and discussion and also about the two pieces that we have in the appendix for you, which are the key performance, performance metrics, excuse me, and the tax maintenance report that we're giving to you every quarter now. So I I didn't know if you had any questions, but it's there's certainly an opportunity for discussion.
I just have a few comments, Madam Treasurer. As always, I want to thank you and your staff. I know that you have been doing a great job at really updating your processes. And it's really, it's really striking because I paid my property taxes online and literally it took like two minutes. It was so fast and easy. And so I really have to applaud you for making it so easy for people to work with your office. And just the diligence, yeah, right, right? And the diligence of your staff and also answering constituent questions. I know that I had gotten an email from a city counselor who wasn't really sure what to do about a constituent. I sent it to you and you were like, oh, I know this person personally. I can help with this. So you knew that person's history and it just amazed me that with everything going on, you were able to handle that just personally. So on every level, I I commend you. So thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Piscotti, thank you so much. We'll take that back to our staff because really that that merchant services that we've been talking about for, oh, gosh, maybe DCM Sidio White could tell us what, four years? I think it was the first year I was elected, so that's five years. We talked and envisioned how we were going to change that and how we were going to make that better. So it's been quite the road. And of course, it's something that we're bringing countywide. Or at least, let me back that off. Hold on. We're we're making it optional to those departments that have cash handling, that take in cash. Where does it make sense to bring that system to them? Not everybody has a need for that. So I see the Madam Clerk is looking at me with with raised eyebrows because she's going to be coming on board. We're going to start the work, we hope, in the fall for your office and and we'll get there. So we've been kind of hitting the low hanging fruit and really testing and proving our case for some of the smaller departments. And then, of course, bringing it on for ourselves. So thank you for that. And of course, with change comes, you have to change your processes. You have to write them down. You have to train staff. And you have to put in, you know, all those checks and balances because the auditors come in and check it. And that's what's really nice, too, is and maybe I shouldn't say this openly on public record, but we have a really great relationship with our auditors where we can say, hey, we did go live with our new cashiering software. Do you think you could take a look at it this time around? And they did that this year. And they said, we're blown away. What used to have 30 different keystrokes to it now only has 10 and only takes two minutes for a cashier to process a cash payment. It's amazing. It's been a game changer. So we've we've just been really delighted that we could do that. So thank you for for recognizing that. We'll definitely, that that might even be a cupcake party in the office. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ditto to all of that.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
That's it.
Awesome. Today, announcement, the next Board of Finance meeting will be seeing Treasurer versus her team on Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022, for the Board of Finance here at 4:00 PM here at Kent Sanchez Chambers. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see your team tomorrow.